All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting for Monday, August 27th, 2018, when we call stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item on the agenda, item six, consideration of superintendent's report, six A convocation highlights. I guess I'll first like to thank Kim, Kathy, and Mary and everyone else that played a role in putting that together because as always, it was a wonderful day and I'll turn it over to you, but just thank you very much.
So I've just handed out a summary of our convocation. I'll just start with, we had a wellness fair for our teachers and our staff and we have a list of individuals and groups that participated in the wellness affair prior to convocation. So we just want to thank all the community organizations that took part in our convocation. I'll start off with just saying we had an excellent convocation. Our theme was socially constructive learning, using our hearts and minds to develop understanding and promote innovation. And I know Chris, Andrea, Ellen attended. Julie Sawyer, our 2017-18 Teacher of the Year, we actually put her presentation up on our website so you can take a look. She really shared an inspiring presentation of images, music, and words. She really is a skilled and exceptional artist, so it was really a visually engaging and inspiring presentation. And it reflected Julie's journey as a teacher here in Farmington. The themes of collaboration, relationships, hope, joy, and empathy really came from her presentation, the images and the music, as well as Julie narrating the presentation. So it was a real celebration of our faculty and our staff and our students. She really brought everyone together in her presentation, so it was exceptional. And then as a tradition in Farmington, we did announce our 2018-19 Teacher of the Year, who we celebrated tonight, and she will represent Farmington and the state Teacher of the Year process, Kim Millar, mathematics teacher at Irving A. Robbins. And we're just so proud that she's going to represent us. And then, as I said earlier, for the first time, we announced our new recognition. Staff Member of the Year, Jean LaTerno, Head Custodian at Westwoods Upper Elementary, received this recognition at convocation. Chris did an excellent job. He talked about the impressive work of our teachers and the strong relationships that exist among and between faculty, staff, students, administration, and this Board of Ed. His message really on behalf of the entire Board was one of support, respect, and trust of our teachers and staff and administration. Karan was our student representative and he highlighted the significant influence Farmington educators have had on his life and the lives of all students. He spoke about the importance of a purpose-driven education that makes a true impact on the world. And Karan also highlighted the importance of relationships. And so I was saying to Karan's mom, like, it was so amazing how everyone's speech kind of supported each other. It was really inspirational. And then Kim shared reflections on our theory of action, specifically highlighting the importance of mastery, purpose, and autonomy for our learners. She also spoke about the importance of socially constructed learning and the need for all students to feel a belonging to the academic community. I provided a summary, believe it or not, this, I will be here 10 years, so I provided a summary of Farmington's improvement journey since enacting our vision of the graduate in 2010. And I really hope that it came across as a celebration of the contributions of all members of the school district community with a focus on the power of teaming to innovate and impact and make an impact. And then, you know, we just had a really busy, yet successful summer. We had so many facility projects which will be highlighted this evening. Curriculum work we'll talk about and just, we really had a lot of time to prepare for the new school year and we're excited to go over some of that work in this, in some of the upcoming agenda items. But it was a really amazing convocation, so it was a nice way to start the year off.
Okay. Any questions? Excuse me, for Kathy? Excuse me. Okay, well, thank you again. It was, it was a wonderful day. It's always a nice way to kick off the year. I should say thank you to Jose and Chartwell's too for a wonderful breakfast.
Oh, yes, we should.
Yes.
Yes, Jose and his staff did a fabulous job for breakfast.
Wonderful job.
And they even had smoothies for us, healthy smoothies.
They did a great job tonight.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Next item, six B, school facilities, summer maintenance and building repairs update.
So I do just want to take a moment to commend the Board and Town Council for including so many much-needed projects for our facilities in this year's budget. It was, as I said, an incredibly busy summer and we have another busy summer ahead of us in 2019, but these are all really needed. And I have to say that, you know, I've been by Noah Wallace and really all the schools. It does bring an energy to the schools when these projects are done. It just, it does speak to your support of the school district, the Town Council, and community support. So I'll have Vin school over some of the projects, but this is one of our more lengthy facility reports after a summer of work. So, great job.
Thank you, Kathy. The first, as Kathy just said, there's a lot of people to thank and the Town Council has been very supportive of the, of this project through the, through some of the projects, starting with the Farmington High School roof project, which we needed to do some things for the state reimbursement. And it, I can even add a little bit more of an update in regards to the Farmington High School roof work. It was substantially complete, it is substantially complete at this time. They're just doing flashing at this time. Tim gave me an update this morning. So that project, very important project, is coming to closure right now. I'm not going to read each and every one of these because Tim has done a great job of outlining it. I do want to say though that Tim Harrison, Patrick Callahan have really gone above and beyond with their work come this summer. It is, some of these projects are very significant projects, like the Noah Wallace Main Office project and the work that is happening over at West District and then the work to come that's going to be happening at West District. So there's some really big things that are occurring in the district. The ones I'm going to highlight though, the, so the roof, a very important one, that is materially completed this time. And at Westwoods, as Jean reported, he sat up and watched the chiller, the chiller get craned onto the top of Westwoods. That is complete, that's 100% complete. That new chiller has been installed, completely put in there. So that project is, is over. At Noah Wallace School, as Kathy just mentioned, the main office is now on the lower level. The nurse's office is on the lower level and the conference room is completed. It's, and I know Kim saw it today.
Yeah.
And it's really quite impressive. I hope the Board, when we do our walkthrough of the district, I hope the Board all gets to come over and see Noah Wallace. This has met a best practice about having the main office now on the lower level, but on the exterior of the building too. And there's still, pardon me?
On the exterior of the building.
On the outside, not outside of the building.
Yeah, no, we can sit up there.
Sitting so I look out into the outside. But there's still work that has to get done at Noah Wallace on that project. The security vestibule will be complete around Columbus Day. There, the plans are all in place, we're prepared for it, but the, some of the equipment and needed aspects of that project are backlogged and are going to be installed right before Columbus Day. And that'll bring it to closure, that, that project. One other thing just to mention about at Noah Wallace, it's the first phases of the exterior work, the trim and painting on some of the front part of Noah Wallace that points towards Ms. Porter's that is being done and restored. I think it's, it looks very nice, actually. Kathy and I both had a tour of that outside, the early work there. It is a beautiful building and I know Tim is spending a lot of time trying to bring it back to life in that sense. So that, and that is just, that part is a phased project. There will be more to that trim and painting and repair work on the exterior of Noah Wallace. At West District, this one is, the first bullet is a very important one. I know the Board was very concerned about it, but the subslap heating supply lines have been abandoned and they're all replaced with overhead copper supply lines. So that issue that we have been dealing with at West District for really a little more than a year, that's been ended, it's been solved. And the library renovation, which was not really seen as a big, big dollar project for the district, but I just think it's made such a difference. And I'm getting feedback from West District teachers, I hope everybody gets to see that one too, that the library renovation project looks terrific inside of West District Elementary School. And there's, throughout, there's a couple of different things mentioned about painting. Again, painting is a phase thing. You'll see it in the lower level of Union Elementary School. You'll see it all over in different places in Noah, but it does bring older buildings back to life with new paint. I'm happy to try to interpret more of Tim's report here for anyone who has any questions.
Well, I would just, for the record, again, like to say it's one thing to have the resources to do it, but again, for the record, Tim and everyone on his crew, thank you, thank them for us to get, I mean, that's an impressive list to get knockoff during the summertime. So it's one thing to be given the ability to do it, but actually get it done like they did, you know, kudos to Tim and everyone. So express that again.
I'll pass that along.
Please pass it along. So any questions for Vin on that?
Actually, I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't ask this before because it's a necessity on the West District heating loop. Is that going to change, like, will it be more efficient? Will it change the cost of the heating for West District?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can, I'll ask that question. That's an interesting question.
I mean, the only thing I can think of, because it's the same boiler, but I think we were losing a lot of water.
That's what I'm thinking.
There were little pinhole, you know, throughout every pipe underneath. So I would think that the water alone is going to be some savings because we were...
It's a great question.
But also, it'll be, it's, it's not underground.
Correct.
Or it's inside, right?
In and above.
It's like, in and above. So I would think, I don't know, I just was thinking that right now.
It's a good question.
I didn't think to ask it before because we had to do it anyway.
It's a, it's a great question. I'll ask it and when we do the tour too, that'll be a good...
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Mark, you have?
It's any idea in terms of, from a budgeting sense, how well we did in terms of funding these projects, if there's money left over, or where we fell roughly? I mean, I know some of these are still underway, but...
Sure, yeah. Well, yes, things are still underway. So I can't give any final numbers on many of these projects, but I'll just say a couple of generality type things. The, on the negative side, the Noah Wallace project was more expensive than planned for. On the positive side, the high school's roof project was materially less expensive than planned for. The chiller, which was a very large piece of equipment and a lot of money, was something that was very easy to estimate because it was, it was a piece of equipment, so it's come in on target. And, and then a lot of these other projects are weaved between capital projects and major projects within the, within the Board's normal budget. And I did do a little analysis this morning on the Board's budget and Tim's all within budget, in the Board's budget, but on the capital ones, I still have to wait for results to see when things close out.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Vince. Okay, next item on the agenda, six C, standards-based curriculum work, summer 2018.
So I know Veronica's here, I'm sure she'll be coming up to the table. This is one of those reports we're really proud of because it, it is still a reflection of how everyone in Farmington, you know, another example of how we all work together to get the work done. And this is a reflection of many, many teachers working over the summer on curriculum projects, Kim and Veronica leading the way. And, you know, we are incredibly fortunate when it comes to Vince on the operations side, Kim, Veronica, in teaching and learning that we, you know, really do exemplary work and it shows in our classrooms and in the programs that we implement. So I'll turn this over to Kim and Veronica.
Well, I'll just start by thanking Veronica in this evening of thanks for just, you know, leading so many people to high expectations and very innovative work. She not only coordinates the curriculum work, but also these exciting summer academies that each year we get more and more people to want to attend. So I know she'll describe them to you.
You're coming up with problems.
Yes. That's one of the problems Vince has to deal with.
Yeah. So I feel like I tell you this report like five times, like, once I come and I tell you what it's going to cost us, and then I come again and say this is what we're actually offering, and then I come again, I say this is what we did. And so you'll, you know, so in order to not be a broken record and just say what the projects were, you can read those, I just want to highlight a couple of things that I think is really impressive. So as both Kathy and Kim highlighted, we did have large involvement of teachers. And so I sat with a highlighter and the teacher lists and for the, especially the high school and the middle school, so seven through 12, and was really looking at core teachers, even though a lot of other teachers are involved, like our counselors will be involved in all that. But of the core teachers, 50% of all of our teachers, seven through 12, came in the summer for one of these, for the academy, which I think is like amazing. And the kind of work that they do, it's interesting because every workshop, it's not, they're not, and I call them workshops because you work during them, but you're learning by doing the work. And so that's like one of Elmore's tenants, and if you read his books, it's like you learn the work by doing the work. So any training is more like giving a seed of an idea and saying, go work on it, and then come back and share it. And so a lot of the workshops kind of go like that. And then teachers show each other what they're working on and we, there's a lot of like curating, so you put a lot of stuff in folders so people can look at it in an organized kind of way. And then you see like lots of like awesome stealing, like you want people stealing all these ideas from each other. So that's what happens a lot. So you'll see something that they're doing in math and all of a sudden, somebody sees a spark of an idea there and now they transfer it over to what they're doing in social studies or English. And so, and then we become not only more vertically aligned, but horizontally aligned too, that teachers know what other teachers are doing and there's a lot of talking and sharing. And so that's great. And I just also want to highlight the work of Tara and this year Katie Nardini helped her run an academy for the elementary. And you've seen some of that awesome work. Tara came to present last year in those exciting science units that they've been developing and also social studies units. So in order to keep it fresh, it's like, sometimes you think, when is it ever going to be done? And like, I'm going to tell you right, like, never. It's never going to be done because part of it is that you want to always be on the cutting edge and always doing that kind of work. But the other thing is, is that's how teachers learn, by sort of doing it themselves and not having something handed to them. And I think that's one of the beauties here, that we don't go out to purchase a curriculum. We believe in designing it ourselves for both the benefit of, we created ourselves who are more invested in it, but it's also a training for the teachers to understand how it's done. It makes the quality of their teaching a lot higher to be involved in these. I mean, we have broad participation too, like, all the schools will be involved. And so sometimes you have cross discipline, cross-school teams and sometimes an entire team from one school will be there together. So I think that that is just so great and I'm so, I think that's one of the reasons when, you know, somebody like Kim says, I don't know why anybody would want to leave this district. And I think that that's why. I think there's so many opportunities and teachers really have a chance to get involved. So it's never like, oh, I'm, you know, I'm doing this, I was told to do this. It's teacher-created in the summer mostly and throughout the year now because of some of the other systems we have in terms of the release subs, we can continue this work throughout the year. So all of that makes it really great for teachers to be learners in Farmington. The other thing I wanted to stress, and that was something that Kathy was highlighting that our student speaker said in convocation, one of the, what we've really been working on is that mastery of, mastering and purpose balance. And so you'll see a lot of our projects and a lot of things that the students are doing now, they want things that have purpose like right now. So we're really working hard to integrate those kinds of things. So it's not like you're doing this in order to hand it into a teacher. It's you're doing this because you're going to have an impact on the world and not when you're older, but now. And so I think that, you know, that's, that's really a direction the curriculum has gone in. So really exciting time. The other thing I wanted to highlight too is that on the mastery side, I think sometimes people will think that because we, you know, have a lot of standards and we've had standards for a really long time, well, isn't that going to mean that students all have to learn the same thing and do the same thing? So I just wanted to highlight the idea that having standards has actually opened up all sorts of flexibility because we are so clear on why we're giving assignments that we're giving or asking questions that we're asking, that when we realize that a student can't tell it to us that way, but could tell it to us that way in order to get the standard, it opens up all sorts of different ways and varied ways that students can show us what they know. And so I actually think it's funny that it seems sort of counterintuitive, but standards has actually opened us up to more innovation and for more pathways for students to show us what they know. And so just wanted to highlight that and teachers by doing this work, understand that more deeply. And then finally, I just wanted to say that we, you know, as a district, we have really three PD days that are in addition to student days that we're seeing students. So one of them happens at the beginning of the school year. That sort of sets up each school and they talk a lot about their school development plans and what they're going to be working on this year and their focus for the year. And then second one, every other year, we run something, this is the October one, we run something called PLX, which is Professional Learning Exchange. And so the reason I bring that up is because a lot of the work that happens in these curriculum academies and throughout the year that people are trying out and developing brand-new, they'll have a chance now to run workshops for their fellow teachers in October where they'll be showing some of these great new practices and new things that they're working on. And it just keeps us so innovative. We've actually had people from other districts ask us how they can come to our PLX event, but it's something that teachers look forward to every time we run it. We do it every two years so that we can always, you know, have, you know, more material and people have the time to develop those things. And then, and then the November day is really in the departments, they, they're able to continue the work of what they, maybe what they learned in PLX or there's some other things planned for that day. So the work happens throughout the year, so I know it's always a, you know, summer report, but I would say it never ends in the summer, it's really just the beginning. And then people work on it all throughout the year and then the cycle starts again. And like I said, it's never done because we're always, we're always innovating and it's also the way that we train teachers, by having them actually participate in these and work on it. So again, nothing, I know that, you know, I always, you know, want to also just highlight that we're so appreciative that we are in a district where this is supported and that, you know, you could support the work of curriculum and allowing us to always be innovative and push everything to the next level. So thank you for that, but I really thank all the teachers that participate. It's really great and, you know, an exciting, you know, exciting new learning is going to happen this year that students are going to be involved in because of all the work. So, thank you.
Questions for Veronica? Yeah?
Veronica, thank you for your report. I have questions as it relates to stuff that was done in math in seventh and eighth grade and science as well. And the way I read it, it says align content and assessment tasks to performance indicators. Can you explain a little bit more about what that means? Because when I read that, it suggests, and this is not a criticism, I'm just trying to understand it, that there was a disconnect between assessing and grading, or something along those lines.
So we've always used understanding by design. So UBD means that first you think about, okay, what's the, what's the standard that we're trying to reach? And then the second is, what is the, how am I going to assess? How am I going to know that the student met that standard? And only then you think about how you're going to teach. And that's, again, opposite to how a lot of people think, you teach and then you assess and then maybe you hit some of the standards, right? So we do it backwards. We say, this is the standard, here's the assessment, and here's how I'm going to teach it. But that assessment piece is really critical. And so really what it means is that teachers were going through assessments with a fine-tooth comb and saying, why am I really asking this question? Which standard is it really assessing? And making that alignment between the stage one of standards and the stage two of assessing. And what they did was also, part of it was doing a, an audit of, okay, so I say in my classes about these things, but now looking at my assessments, where do I really assess for that standard? And so teachers are saying, wow, I'm seeing lots of gaps in what we're doing. We say we do the standard, but now when I'm looking and looking at my tests really by standard, we never really ask questions that get me any evidence of that. And so there was a lot of that kind of work. And in terms of the grading, you know, we didn't really spend an awful lot of time talking about the grading of that, which just, really it is about though, taking the assessments, breaking up the assessments so that you can see what standard is this assessing? But could it down, but could it down the line say, could we now give students feedback on that standard specifically rather than on an entire assessment? Could we now just say, what's this standard about? Yeah, I think teachers are down the road of being able to give a lot more fine-grained detail to students about how they're doing on particular standards.
At the workshop, you gave us kind of a rubric that was understand the current grading policy. So that's kind of what I'm thinking, I'm hearing you say right now is like how you break down a standard and how the standard is assessed.
Yeah.
And so my next question is, as related to math, what, in seventh and eighth grade in the middle school, what was not aligned or what was the challenge? So what, what did we see that we needed to kind of fix?
So again, you know, just a, you give a test because the chapter ended and so now you give a chapter test and it wasn't, and so now what teachers are really doing is saying, okay, so I wanted to understand whether students know how to create a line from two sets, from a set of points, okay? So I want to really know that. So which questions is going to, are going to show me that? Because I can't, once I give a, you know, once I see it on an entire assessment, I can't break down how they did on that one piece.
That individual, right, on that one part.
Right. But they're also looking at even one step further because they're saying, to what extent will I really see that the student has mastered it and how will I know that they're even beyond mastering that? And so I think that in math, that was part of, part of it, you know, that, so that students now are going to, maybe on a math test, they will get feedback on maybe three different, this is the standard, here's your feedback on that standard, here's a standard, here's your feedback on that standard, that one is one that you need to still work on. We weren't able to do that with our assessment.
So in other words, you were, you were, you were reducing the assessments to even, in other words, you, you found places to reduce the assessments to even lower, even more fine detail.
More fine detail. You're, you're going to be able to now know what you need to work on as your next step. And hopefully before you get to a final assessment.
Right.
So one of the things we're working on when we say that aligning assessments, I'm not just talking about the summative assessments, but I'm talking about the formative assessments that all lead up to it so that students know how they're performing before they get to the test so they can fix it. We don't want them to find out on the test that they, that they don't know what they're doing. So it was all of that. So teachers get trained in the summer on all those things, but their training is, here's the idea, go work on it and put it together and then that's how, that's...
I understand that. I think that's what, what I came away from that workshop more than anything else was that, that process and why it's really important to have that kind of feedback and the, and the significance of the formative assessments was really... I think that's what, what I came away from that workshop more than anything else was that, that process and, and why it's really important to have that kind of feedback and the, and the significance of the formative assessments, um, was really underscored because it gives you the opportunity for the family and the student to understand the depth of understanding as it relates to that particular standard at a point in time before, you know, the score, the score, not that it doesn't count, I don't want to say it because it's going to, but it, the score, you know, really matters in the form of a cumulative assessment. Um, my next question was related to, and it was more of a clarification. I noticed that we, um, worked on PBIS, um, at, uh, I developed a curriculum for the PBIS at IAR. Now I remember we put PBIS in at IAR first, so I'm guessing that's because it probably needed to be updated because it was, it's been what, five years, six years since we started it?
Right. And they've integrated lessons into their advisory program.
It was way more detailed than it was, when it was just 10 people talking in a classroom about their experience.
Right. So now they've really tried to package up particular lessons that'll happen during the advisory program.
Cool. Thank you very much. See, we read these things.
Yeah. Veronica, I have a question. I guess it comes from, you know, when, when it comes to technology and I exhibit a certain level of self-awareness and stay in my lane, but when I look at your report, you know, and you say technological integration, integrating technology, transformative technology used by students, is there something just generally in the classroom or curriculum from a technological perspective that we can look forward to a year down the road, two years, or like what are you referring to, transformative technology and, you know, in terms of resources that you are looking at in terms of curriculum and delivering the curriculum in the classroom?
So that's a good question. Now we did have several people involved in that, but not a lot of people. Um, but I think that a lot of the work when it comes to transformative technology will happen through, we have, um, technology specialists at, at some of our schools and so they'll, they, they push some of these practices. Um, but really when I say transformative there, what it means is that, um, there's something called a SAMR model that when you're, um, using technology in the classroom, it might be at a very low kind of level. It could be at a level and they used to call it a thousand dollar pencil, um, but no technology costs a thousand dollars anymore, as you know. Uh, so let's say the $250 pencil, um, where you're just using it to replace what you could have done before. But the real power of technology is that you could do things that you could never do before this kind of technologies in the hands. So that means, and that, it really goes back a lot to the purpose kinds of things. It means that we can connect students to, um, new audiences or different audiences. It means we can, um, connect them to experts in the field, um, and so they can access more professional and, um, uh, more up to date, recent, um, information than they ever could before when you had just a library. Um, it means that students can interact with other students in much different ways. So it's that whole idea of breaking down classroom walls. So it really, I mean, it really does get, um, at that purpose piece, um, that you could do new things with technology that you couldn't do.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, you know, I'm looking over in the distance, like all that stuff is obsolete in a year and we need to read, you know, I was just wondering if something's coming down the pipe.
No, it's more like, um, we still have a lot of, you know, practices where it's still just substituting and we have a rubric we created in town also, a rubric where, and it's aligned to our framework for teaching and learning. Um, and so we can, on each of the strands of our framework for teaching and learning, we can go into a classroom and say at what level, one, two, three, four, five, that classroom is operating in terms of, um, this, the technol, technological transformation and we monitor that actually every year. And so we go into classrooms and we're watching to see, because we want to over time see if the technology is moving, um, us into that direction. But it's going to take a lot more coaching still, quite honestly. So we did start up, we seen a nice, we were at like a one, you know, and we crept up into two and we see some threes, but we're certainly not, um, in general at the fours and fives. But again, that's going to just take more coaching, more people, um, understanding this kind of language and all of that, but it's a work in progress.
I, I think I would add, um, if you recall when we were at Union School and Caitlin was presenting the, the partnership between third graders and their high school buddies. And although on face, it doesn't seem like that's transformative technology, but because the third graders were just taping themselves, you know, they didn't, weren't waiting to get their turn in front of the video camera, they were just taking their Chromebook off into a corner and making their own video and saying, hi, I'm, you know, Kim and I'm, want to introduce myself to you, my partner. And, you know, so it's very, uh, spontaneous and independent and, um, that's what I think we like to see more of where kids, or Caitlin said she's had students come up to her and say, Mrs. Eckler, I made a video, would you like to include it in your presentation? I'm like, okay.
That's great. Liz?
So I have a follow-up question to that about the technology integration. It looks like, so only seven teachers participated in that? Is that normal for like that?
No, I think it was just, um, a timing thing because we did, we were, um, we had such a great response, uh, to the institute that was run at the end of the summer. And I told you about 50% of seven through 12 teachers in the core academics participated. So those are the same teachers that wanted to participate in that as well. So instead we moved it to right before the school year started. Um, and I think that not as many teachers were available. So I think that that was just, and but, but I didn't want to cancel it because seven teachers were interested. So I figured, let's run it and Andy is the one that runs that and he was still willing to run it. And sometimes it's nice just to have a little time in the summer to get the ball rolling on something. And I would say that that's really what it was. It was just a little bit of a nudge, um, to say like, pick something that you're going to be doing throughout the year anyway and ramp it up in one of these areas so that we can see something. And Andy's going to follow those projects throughout the year. Um, so hopefully maybe by the end of the year, we'd have something to share about that. So maybe we could think about that for a future board meeting to just say, this is, when we're talking about these technology things, maybe we could, um, come back and like Tara did last year, maybe we could highlight something with the technology and what we're talking about here. That'd be a good topic at some point.
So can I just, so just to follow up with that though, cause I mean, I was wondering if it was a timing thing or if it's more that people, some teachers, I don't know if this is true, I know in my profession, um, they want us to use more and more technology and there's a reason, when you get to a certain age, there's a resistance to that.
I said, I stay in my lane. Stay in my lane.
People like paper at my age. So.
There's some research about that too, though, that, that it's, I mean, I'm glad that we balance it. We don't say everything's technology because there is some, anyway, but.
Well, so I guess my question is, do you see, uh, a need to expand it to get, like, I think Kim's example was great, that it doesn't have to be some kind of huge transformative thing where you're doing your whole class, uh, you know, online and that you're using a technology the whole time period. It could be something as simple as, I mean, the students can do it themselves probably already and, but utilizing that in your class. So like, are you seeing any resistance because people are afraid? Or is it more of a, it was just a timing thing? I want, you know, that's what I guess I need.
Yeah, I think in this case it was a timing thing. We don't see that kind of, um, resistance for the most part. People want to, um, try things, but I think they also, um, sometimes, um, lack the ideas of where you can go to can, connect to some of these things, like how would I even get started and all of that? But I think we can do a lot of that through our coaching. Um, so I think, you know, I think it also speaks to the fact that there's, I think people feel that they have access during the school year too. So if they had questions or they wanted to do something, they could also, um, make that happen throughout the school year and maybe don't need to come to a session in the summer because we have, we do have access to some of that.
Okay.
We also, I mean, I, I think Liz's point is a good one, that our students, especially at the secondary level, but I would say even at the elementary level are wonderful resources. You know, they often, I've been in classrooms where the student might step in and say, oh, here's how you solve that issue, you know, with technology.
Well, openly.
Here's how you do that.
I know, I think you were talking about that last time.
Yes, exactly. It happens at our, in our homes and it happens in schools.
Oh, it does.
Yes. Um, and I just, Veronica, could you say something to, you know, we're talking about these projects, but beyond these projects, we have teams, grade level teams, course level teams, vertical teams, and that's really how the work spreads in the district. So, you know, just that, that it's not just the people who attended because then they go to their teams and they share these practices.
Exactly. Exactly. I mean, that's, that's how, you know, when you think about systems and the systems are in place, this is, you know, we have a lot of ways to scale up the work and to share the work. And so what Kathy was describing is exactly how it goes, that sort of, you know, it happens throughout the year, it happens during, through, um, different teaming structures. Um, and I, I mean, I think that, you know, at the high school, a lot of times you might be on one team for like you're, you know, you're teaching world history one, so you're on that team, but you may also be on a ninth grade team, talking to other, um, teachers. So before you know it, a lot of this stuff is just being talked about a lot because, you know, a lot of people were in it and now there's some pressure to be like, oh, what are they working on? They're doing something, what is that they're doing? And then more people will do it, even if they didn't come to an institute, because we have other ways of sharing that work. So, um, so even with the technology that happens, you know, somebody will see something. And we also have, I would say, um, I think a really great practice that we do in our schools now, our faculty meetings are not maybe what you would think a faculty meeting is. A lot of times faculty meetings in the past were, we have to give you some information. We do a lot of that now through email and just bullet points. Um, so at, at, um, faculty meetings, there's a lot of sharing that goes on. So there'll be, and we don't always call them best practices, we just call them promising practices because maybe they're best for now, or maybe they're not even best, maybe they're just promising practices. So we have a lot of promising practice shares, but that, that same process that I described before, somebody shows something that they're doing, somebody else says, oh, that's cool, how'd you learn how to do that? Then we have a coach that can now work with that team and people will sign up to work with coaches and have them come in, um, either to coach them right in the classroom or to come to a team meeting now to help them with that. Or somebody from that actual team will volunteer and go, they'll say, oh yeah, I could show you how I did that and then they'll go. So it's really nice to have the flexibility to, for teachers really design their own PD throughout the year too, for what they, what they need and what they're interested in. Um, and that's another, um, that's another saying, you know, we always have some of these sayings that says, you know, um, about you learn the work by doing the work, but another one is use the group to change the group. And I think that that might be a little bit of what you're referring to, that it's really the people who are doing the work are the ones that can make the greatest changes, just like even with students. Students are going to make the greatest changes with other students. That's, that's kind of how that goes. And then, um, teachers, you know, can lead them there to, to have that kind of collaborative culture, but that certainly happens with our teachers here too. So that's, it's an exciting place to work because you're always, you're definitely always learning and you're always feeling, and sometimes people don't like it because it feels like it's never good, good enough because somebody else is already working on the next thing, right? When you think you've mastered something, that's the problem with technology. Someone comes out like, oh, now I have to learn that too. But, um, but that's, if you're a learner and that's what we try to hire for, that's what's exciting. That's what's exciting, so.
Any questions?
Well, thank you Veronica, and don't apologize. We like hearing about this. You think it's competitive, it's very good to get the updates, do not apologize. But thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, 60 professional appointments, retirements and resignations.
So this is an extended report.
Yeah.
Of that, with a lot more information, um, some of which Veronica just went over. So, um, I'll have Kim give a summary. Thank you. So speaking of hiring and hiring people as learners, this report includes information about our, um, recruitment, hiring and induction process. Um, you can see the names of the 27 people that came on board with us, um, last week. I say that officially last week, but many of them, when they're hired in the spring, are anxious and excited and get right into our schools and, um, meet their future colleagues and start looking at the curriculum and some of them participate in some of these summer academies. So, um, by the time they welcome students into their classrooms, I think they've been well acquainted with who we are and how we work and, um, our, our big, uh, ideals and goals. Um, we are fully staffed, that's a good thing. And last week on Monday and Tuesday, all new teachers come to this room on Monday for district-wide orientation and they're, you know, surrounded by all the administrators in the district and we give them a, I think a very excited welcome. Um, we do a little getting to know you activity and then a series of, um, informational kinds of things, um, but also inspirational, um, messages about growth mindset and, um, you know, vision of the graduate and, and what we're here to do, what our mission really is all about. Um, and then the next day they are in their own schools, working with their department leaders or specialists and principals, um, shown where all the supplies are and whatever they might need to get themselves ready to go. Um, so that is the bulk of this report. I do think that, um, we've kind of touched upon the curriculum work and the professional development work that went on in the summer. And then, um, just lastly, I want to, um, distribute to you a list of, of the professional development, um, that occurred, beginning with new teacher orientation last week, Wednesday being convocation in the morning, but then, um, faculty adjourned to their schools for, um, meetings. And then Thursday was a full day of professional development planned by the buildings. Lori Singer had some time on, uh, Thursday afternoon to meet with her department as well. So, um, we've, we've heard lots of rave reviews, one even included an ice cream truck. So I think it was a good day.
Okay, any questions, comments? Kim? Okay, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item on the agenda, item 7A, budget impact, budget update.
Vince? Um, very early in the, in the, um, budget, uh, year, um, two things I'll, um, mention just as updates, the new educational finance, uh, finance system report, EFS, um, which replaced the, um, the old ED 001, um, year-end report. Um, we've, we were able to file that, um, last week. It was a, um, a big thing for us in the business office to, um, learn. Beth Haber, um, did terrific work, um, in creating a, um, a tool that got our, um, budget information from our, um, the Budget Sense Program into the state's, um, um, report. And, um, Pam, um, Abi also, our data specialist, um, was a, played a big role. Both of them deserve a lot of credit for, um, getting that, um, filed and, uh, doing, helping, um, the district get our year-end reports completed and they are completed. Um, and the other thing I'll mention is, um, we just got a notification, um, about a, um, a grant award. And this is for, um, this, actually the state of Connecticut is getting, um, uh, over almost $11 million, $10.6 million for the, um, from the federal government for the displaced student aid, um, the, um, children who, um, were displaced due, due to the hurricanes. Um, and, um, Farmington did apply. Dr. Singer was, um, one of the, uh, the signer, um, on this and Farmington, uh, it looks like we're going to be getting, uh, $33,000, um, back in, um, from the state. And, um, I'm just now in a, uh, waiting, a holding pattern until we get an official award letter, um, from the state on that.
Okay. Any questions for Vince? Okay, thank you Vince. Next item, item eight, new business, starting out easy this year, this, today?
Yeah, right.
All right. Uh, item nine, A, approval financial report dated June 30th, 2018.
So like I just mentioned, um, the, uh, this is the June, um, financials that the board has in their packet, but it also is the, um, year-end financials and the year-end results, um, for the board. The, uh, I don't think the board's going to see any surprises when you look at, um, this year-end financial. It did come in, um, as, um, was expected. It was a positive ending to the, um, school year from a financial and budgetary, um, standpoint. Um, there, um, are definitely in the, uh, on the comments section, page three, um, there are definitely, I put in some, um, comments on some of the, um, items that, um, were either to the good or not to the good, um, things, but overall, um, it came, uh, came in as a, a good year.
Do you have a question?
Yes, real quick, so to clarify for anybody who might, who might want to watch this at home, um, at the end of the year, there was a $6,609 surplus in the school account, Vince?
Yes.
And that money will be returned to the town council?
Yes.
That's great. Thank you. But out of a $63 million budget. Well done.
Well done to Vince, good job. Any other questions, comments? Any other questions, comments? Oh, yeah, we do need motion, that's right, yeah, motion to approve the financial report dated June 30, 2018.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Okay. Item 10, reported to the board chair, update on committee meeting dates, policy?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Negotiations, Mark, you can update this, I know.
We've had, I'd like to say we had a pretty busy summer, but we had a pretty long break between our-
Yes, I know.
Our June meeting and our August 14 meeting, so negotiations are ongoing. We have another meeting on September the 6th at 4:30. We've met with our health representative, we're going through all the back and forth at this point, so more to come after the 6th, hopefully.
All right, communications?
Report.
Okay. Curriculum, how to report, okay. And then, the building, the project, I guess, give you a quick update on the survey committee ad hoc, we're meeting Thursday for, to interview the potential candidates, there's five applicants, we narrowed it down to three potential candidates we'll be meeting, so we'll have more to report after we meet with those candidates. And on the financial piece, Christine, do you want to just give a quick update?
So, we have another meeting scheduled, I'm sorry, candidates for, what you were just talking about, you said you know- For the survey.
For the survey, this is the community survey, we had five applicants, narrowed it down to three, we'll be interviewing them on Thursday.
Okay.
And we'll pick a, an entity to do the survey, work with us to do the survey.
Where's your meeting?
It'll be in the town hall chambers, or, I can double-check, but in the town hall, maybe the conference room to do the interviews, if not the chamber.
So, our next meeting is Tuesday, September 18. We also have decided to formally meet in, let's say this wrong now, was it, in the library, from now on? Yes?
I believe it's in the, I believe it's here in the library from now on, right?
Correct, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But you're right about the survey, it's down at town council chambers.
Right.
Right, survey committee.
At this point, we're still fact gathering, so we don't have a lot of action items at this point, other than gathering more information.
And then, we'll just add both of those-
Yeah, when we do the-
To the agenda, it's just, this isn't one of the agendas that has everything, but we are going to do that going forward.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. That being said, again, welcome back, everybody, thank you, hope you have a good year, and look forward to working together again, accomplishing great things. So, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, or adjourned.